Mr. Ivy know the show must go on in far Cincinnati, man, I put on tunes made another flame beat for me to cook on. Raised dogs, closed fish, yeah, too strong. Chop it up at the chop shop, top notch with that king flow, the hot shot cops watching, listen to the reels, jumping like hopscotch. Nobody hearted it. Oh, nope, they not. Not only citywide, but nationwide. Some relatives keep it locked like them Haitian guys, put the truth in the airwaves, we talk about it. Brand new like the chip place, let's be about it. Who got the info by the AM? John O'Beater rapper got him jamming when they play him, staying in my lane, they ain't gotta OK him. Who the host with the scoop? Yeah, they gonna say him, Ivy. So superlative like a bag of Grippos, so you wear the bricks at Cincinnati red time. One time where my people at? Team N I, where my people at? It's the five one third, yeah, you know the flow. What's the word Nate? Let them know the show. One time where my people at? Team N I, where my people at?
Let me say good morning to everybody as I pop the music down. Good morning. Let's get the show started very, very quickly. Three traits that I think we need in city council members, if you live in the city of Cincinnati, in less than two years, you're gonna have a majority new council. Three quick traits. One, the ability to not obsess over small things, insignificant things. You know, not getting caught up in the politics. Like, I understand it's a political arena, but nonstop BS about politics. I mean, we've had enough of that. Two, to be able to be a consensus builder, because from my observation, I see people on council and I wonder, what are they doing? It's like every time they're in the media, it's always for something wrong. Like, can you, because think about this when it comes to city council, which you have to remember is this, is that you're just one of nine. You're one of nine and you have to have a majority. And you have to have the ability and not every human being, like you can be really good at basketball, but not be a consensus builder. You can be really, really good at whatever, but doesn't mean that you can, you can collectively work with other individuals to try to persuade them, to try to convince them that your ideas are best for the city. That's different. And then three, and surely not least, they have to understand that there are particular needs of the African American community in the city of Cincinnati. And as much as we celebrate all the successes, as much as we celebrate the renaissance is going on, let's be real, some people are being locked out. They have to understand that, you know, black wealth building in the city of Cincinnati, homeownership, these kind of building blocks is a necessary step if Cincinnati is going to become this great city of the future that I'm sure everyone who lives in the city, if you're thinking about running for politics, if you work for the city, if that's your world, I'm sure you want that for multiple reasons, not the least of which, you live here. Good morning. Let me throw my number out to the ether and see what happens. Man, there is a crazy cast of characters and I say that very affectionately at folks that call on a regular basis. And I'm very grateful for your voices. Five one three eight seven three seven one three four. People try to hate on the regulars, but you have to have your regular voices of every show. I don't care any show you go, it could be national, it could be Karen Hunter, it could be Tariq Nashe, I don't care who it is. You know, you gonna have some folks, as you call them regulars, that are very vocal and listen, what you have to understand, and I understand this very, very well, and I tell people that I do podcasts with and we put the number out and sometimes the numbers don't light up. I tell people, the same thing happens in commercial radio. Don't let them fool you. Often times he's sitting there with no phone lines whatsoever and they're trying to, they're trying to get something started. Right? So that's not an unusual thing. Just because people don't call, don't people, don't mean that people are not listening. I tell people I podcast with all the time. Don't even, don't even worry about that. That's the least of your concerns. But good morning to you. Five one three eight seven three seven one three four. There I said it. Let me add this, a maxim, and I've been using this for years and it serves me well. Open your mind before you open your mouth. Other than that, it's all good. How do we sound? Want to make sure my levels are good. I want to be loud in your ear this morning. I want to talk about that. Also, I want to talk about Lonnie Love. Lonnie Love is one of the members of a daytime show that's very, very popular. And she is an African American. And she is in a relationship with a non African American, with a European American gentleman. I believe they're dating or something like that, married something. And what she said about black men has to, we have to put a defense. I've already tweeted, re-tweeted to Lonnie. I see her message saying, look, what the hell does cheating have to do with slavery? I've got the audio clip for you. I'll let you adjust for yourself. I'm telling you, black people in general are the most maligned. We already know it. Everybody's talking about us and who we are and what we do. And black men in particular are still remain public enemy number one. You know what I'm saying? Everything that's wrong in relationships is the black man's fault. That's the reason why women can't find some, it's the black man's fault. Now, many times there are women out there who are flawed. And, but we don't focus on that. We focus on the flaws of the male species. It comes with the territory. If you got testicles, you know what I'm saying? All the good things about having testicles, the other side of that is you gotta deal with this. But I want to discuss it this morning, at least a little bit. Five one three eight seven three seven one three four. There I said it again. We should be all good. I hope you had a great weekend. Hope you got a chance to recharge. And I hope you got a chance to spend some time with your family, as I did. My, my son is amazing. He's gonna be playing basketball very soon. Yes, on Saturday mornings, we are now starting the process for him to get to the NBA. And he's, he's pretty lucky to be my son. Because I can pass down all of my physical genes and give him some of the building blocks and fundamentals. I can pass down my height, my height and my physicality, as long with my wife, to him. And he is taller than your normal four-year-old. You never know. If I can get him to about six, seven, six, eight, we might have something here. You know what I'm saying? In terms of him getting to college, all that NBA stuff. But if, begin, we're just starting. He might decide he don't like basketball. What do I do then? I make him play anyway, like every other father. The little negro, you gonna play this sport. You gonna play this sport. And you know, my wife and I, he's, he's gonna be like the our later in years sort of entertainment. You always gotta have something to entertain you. I fantasize about being an empty nesters, but the empty nesters that I know, they ain't doing shit. They sitting right here doing the same shit I'm doing. What's the difference? And I don't know. I think I'll be doing something different, but he's gonna be our, our late in years entertainment. We're gonna sit back, kick our feet up collectively and just watch him do shit. Put him in basketball, put him in soccer. He will not play football. No, we already know about the traumatic brain injuries, but you never know. You never know. I mean, this is his life. We shall see, but I'm looking forward to it. I bring him up because I'm an early riser and a late sleeper. So he comes downstairs three AM in the morning, I'm up. Big old smile on his face. I'm like, man, he wants to play. I mean, if that isn't the greatest thing ever, then what is? I recently had a conversation with someone and I don't know how we start talking about this. I think he had a little, his, his daughter was recently born. We was talking about it and I told him, I said, you know, man, this family-ish boy is so powerful. I feel like I've got everything. I've got much more. I've been blessed way more than I should have been. You know what I'm saying? You ever feel that way? Way more than I deserve. Me? And there's no man or woman in the world that can give me what I already have. I've already got everything. I can need more money now. I mean, not need, but have. Yeah, you could always have more of this or that, but that's just resources. You know, the, the respect and love of my children, my son enthusiastic to see me, what's better than that? The respect of my wife and my daughter, what's better than that? Like this morning I was up early and I was just kind of going through some Christmas gifts that my kid got me. My kids got me. They don't have no damn money because all the money have, we give them. But my daughter wrote me a letter talking about how much she appreciates me. I keep these things around me. That's, that's my strength. That's my motivation. If you ever want to know, that's my motivation right there. And it is a very powerful elixir. There is, it's natural. There's nothing like it. And there's nothing more sacred than that. And you know, Monday is great. It's beautiful outside. It's cold, but I'm alive. My son is beautiful. My daughter is beautiful. My wife is healthy. And I get to rock with you in the morning, so I'm ready to go. Let's chop it up. I'll throw it up again, the number, five one three eight seven three seven one three four. So there I said it again. And we all good. Good morning to you. I hope you had an equally as good weekend. And hope you had a great weekend. So all my empty nesters friends, do something with that new time you got. I'm sitting around in Cincinnati doing the same shit I'm doing. We do. People with children, go do something. Go travel the world. You sit here eating the same food I'm eating. What's the difference? Good morning to you. See Pat's in the house. She writes, good morning. Mike Davis writes, rise, rise and shine, young stars. And Tanika writes, good morning Nate in the choppers. Tracy writes, hi, good morning, everybody. Thank you for being here. What is on your radar screen? As always, please post the link. Feel free to do so. There's something going on, there's something over the weekend that you want to bring to the chopper's attention or my attention. You never know, I might have a flow already. I may already have a flow and there's numerous things that have happened over the weekend. I want to catch you up to speed, but as I said, three characteristics. What are three traits that you think we need in the upcoming city council race? I know I'm speaking ahead, but just in general, you know what I'm saying? What are you looking for as we get ready for March primaries? And, and your local representation. Again, before you know it, it'll be November. November is one year away from the 2021 election. Between now and, and November, and especially in November, right after the election is when you're gonna get the mass announcements of people who are thinking about running and then our shift is gonna, to some degree, shift to that. But what do you think? I want to hear your thoughts. Tony Rice, good morning. Slap on the wrist for Doug Evans. Three cheers for white privilege. Yes, that's right. I believe that the, a man who was working with Doug Evans, he was like his second in charge, he was sentenced and he basically got a slap on the wrist. And by slap on the wrist is he got probation. Now, if you don't know Doug Evans, let me give you the story here a little bit because this was, you know, last week and I think right now, very, very relevant. Especially because you got a member of city council, Tamaya Denard, that put out a proposal that would, would to some degree put some limits and or bar, you know, companies, local companies from getting city contracts after they've been found to have fraudulently, you know, fraudulently gotten some city contracts. So Doug Evans, white male, basically, you know, we going back a few years here during a recession and he decided to create a, a pass-through company as it's called, and it was called Ergon. Now, if you don't know Ergon, if you change the spelling of it, spells negro. This is a fact that was not lost on the federal prosecutors that raided his place, they had surveilled him and what they found is in fact was true. Is that this white male, in order to make money, basically created a front company, put, put a black dude that was under his charge on his payroll, put him fake in charge of it and they got millions of dollars in contracts that essentially they, they stole by all accounts. You know, if somebody goes to a convenience store and runs out with $50 worth of groceries, people think it's okay for you to die. Like if somebody ran into a grocery store this morning in Cincinnati and stole $51 worth of Grippos and candy and stuff and then somebody ran out and shot him in the back, there would be more folks in this world who would be like, oh, he got what he deserved. Meanwhile, this white dude is robbing the community, perhaps retarding the growth of minority-owned and small businesses. And you know, his second in charge gets slap on the wrist. You know, you know, hey, don't do it again, B. And I was very happy to see Tamaya Denard picked up on that. And that tells me that she and her people are very sensitive and perceptive to the BS that's going on in the city of Cincinnati. And I'll say it again, that should have been more media attention and outrage and should, still should be about that issue. That's a very important issue. Everybody wants to talk about the wealth disparity. These motherfuckers robbing these minority-owned businesses. Maybe that's why. Maybe that's why. Shout out to Tamaya Denard and her staff on that. Yeah, so his, his second in charge essentially, you know, no, no big deal. Like I told you, there, there would be black people who would be like, oh, he got what he deserved. Meanwhile, this dude over here robbing millions of dollars. Never apologized. Doug Evans never, never shown any nothing. And he got a fraction of what the federal prosecutors recommended him to get. And oh, by the way, he's sitting at home right now watching, watching the AFC championship. Doug Evans is home watching the NFC championship over the weekend. His ass should be in jail. It's just, it's just, I understand we talking about different things, but I think you can never understate the inequities that we consistently see out here. I don't think it ever can be understated. Don't get me started on that. Don't get me started on that. Cassandra writes, hey, choppers, good morning to you, queen of Wakanda. Yes, you'll hear me from time to time refer to the chop shop as cyber Wakandas. It's a Marvel thing. Let's go with it. Jared's in the house. Good morning, Jared. He writes, good, good morning, hashtag team and I. Good morning, sir. Appreciate you. Appreciate you. To all my patrons, check your patron stream and your messages. I'm doing weekly updates on what's going on with the show and behind the scenes. Um, let's see. Ray Rice, grand rising. Oh, there's a new message actually waiting for you. The Minister of Info's in the house. Good to see you, Rice. Good morning, Nate. Black Rush is in the house. He writes, good morning, hashtag alt middle. Good to see you, Dasvidanya. I don't even know what that means, but I think it means good to see you. I think he was in Rocky III or something like that, if I'm wrong. You know the number. When I see Black Russia, I think of Christopher Smitherman. And when I think of Christopher Smitherman, I think of Jason Williams. I posted a clip inside the friends page of, of Jason Williams. If you know who Jason Williams is, he's a white male that writes for the Cincinnati Inquirer. And he talks about politics and I don't know where Jason Williams is politically. I hear, I hear Democrats criticize him. I hear Republicans criticize him. To me, that means he must be doing his job. Just from a media standpoint, he must be doing his job. But I see both sides criticizing him. But anyway, he, he does this piece called Politics Extra. And in it, he started talking about city council and he was once again making a point as to why it was a good idea to limit council's power. And of course, recently voters voted to go from two-year terms to, for four-year terms to two-year terms, which for me, I just felt like we should at least do it for three cycles and then we can sit back and analyze it. I don't think we've seen enough of a sample to determine as to whether four-year terms are better than two-year terms. I think that it has an impact, but I think that the particular personalities and how they interact on city council has more of an impact on the chaos than whether it's two years or four-year terms. Because back when it was two-year terms, you had Leslie Gis and she was going at it with my not-home girl. Look here, Nicole. She is not my homegirl. Right? But you remember she was going back and forth and she told her, Jess, you talk too much and all this kind of, that was two-year terms. So it has nothing to do with the terms. It's the people. And what they bring to the table and how they interact with one another. That seems to be very easy to see to me, quite honestly, but yeah, he wrote this piece basically justifying why council, it was good to go back to two-year terms and blah, blah, blah. And he was talking about some of the things that have been in the media over the last couple of weeks, like, you know, Chris Silbok, who is a white male Democrat, openly gay, just so you know, just put it all out there. He's a proud gay man. And he is, you know, he got involved publicly with the idea that they were gonna remove a statue that's in a place called Eden Park, which has great views of Northern Kentucky, not of Cincinnati and the river on certain days. And to the negroes show up. Yeah, I put it out there. And they've got some statue that was donated by Mussolini, who of course is connected to Hitler, who was of course connected to mass genocide of human beings. So that's a bad thing, right? And you had Jeff Pastor, who was taking up the idea that they should change the name of Mickey Avenue because it was named after a slave owner. And so Jason Williams is making a point that these are frivolous things and I, I, I think it's, I think people say that. When I hear people say, oh, you can be talking different things. Maybe I'm wrong or not, but I think two things. I think either it's, it's deflecting, right? Talk about this. Pardon me. Talk about this and not that. It's like a form of deflection, like rhetorical deflection. Or it's just some people that just want to say some shit. You know what I'm saying? Because you can say, you can go, you can say that about anything. You can, you can be having a conversation about, I don't know, you know, fill in the blank and somebody could say, oh, why aren't you talking about that? It depends on your filter, you know, what's important to you. And I think that city council has multiple roles and that's part of it. That's part of it. So I didn't see a problem with the, they have a lot of conversations down there, not just about that. Now, they were sitting around talking about naming streets for, for a month. Okay, now this is a little excessive or over and over again, you know, way past the, the expiration date, then you know, that'd be different. And speaking of which, that's the point he started making about Christopher Smitherman. And I make this point because when I made the point, I know people was like, oh, he's just saying this because of PG Sittenfield or he don't like Christopher Smitherman or whatever the fuck people think, excuse my language, whatever the F people think. But the reality is no. You know, when I heard the tape, I was taken aback that there was so much time spent talking about text messages. And then I see Jason Williams made the same point. He actually went kind of hard at Christopher Smitherman in that piece. And then also ended by saying, we need more people like that on city council. Which to me sparked the conversation of, you know, what are some of the traits of the people that we wanted our next city council? I mean, this is long-term thinking because we're over a year from the election, but yeah, I mean, that's also a short amount of time as well. Something to think about. What are those traits? And it's, it's just like, you got all these shootings, unsolved murders and then the chair of law and public safety is down here spending hours and hours talking about text messages. That, that he knows is never going to a vote, so it's pure political prostrating. And it, it, it needs to be, if it was anybody else, people be talking about it, but to me, it doesn't really matter. And think about that. And even Jason Williams, and again, I hear Democrats say, oh, you know, he's a Republican. And I hear Republicans say, don't like him either. So I don't know where Jason is. I don't know what his political views are, quite honestly. Uh, but I thought it was interesting that he made that point. Did you see that? What do you think? Five one three eight seven three seven one three four. Good morning to you. So I think the traits that I would throw out there is we need people that's not gonna get caught up on the small stuff. And number two, we need people that can build consensus. Like, can you work with other individuals that's got as much power as you do? Y'all all on the same level. And get them to convince them that your ideas or your proposals, you know, are the right direction to go. Because when I look at city council, I see, I see some people that seem to be working together and I see other people that don't. And I'll, you know, without fill in the blank, you know, you're observant. As we have these conversations moving forward, because I'm gonna spend more and more time talking about city council, I think that it's interesting as we get ready to set a new slate to understand what the, the relevant issues are right now and what people are focusing on. So I'll just be one focus. Of course, I'll be focusing on the March primaries as we get closer and closer as well. And I've got several invitations to come on the show. As a matter of fact, you can look for a conversation from someone who is running for Hamilton County Commissioner of this week, as a matter of fact. And I'll confirm it with you perhaps later in the show or perhaps tomorrow. Okay, so it's that time. Also, we're gonna catch up with a brother man who, this week, who, you know, brother here locally in the Cincinnati area, who just wrote a book. It's an Amazon bestseller. Man, local, local talent. Um, let's see here, drop, no, Mason Moller writes, a morning Nate in the choppers, hashtag people don't dance no more. Hashtag not that African American over there. You know, that slot is open. Miss Tiffany Rice, morning. Good to see you, Miss Tiffany. You know that slot is open, right? That slot is available if you want it. It is available. Oh my gosh. What's this? Shout out to the Hamilton County Democrat Party. They've been getting some pub over the weekend because, you know, after the resignation of Democrat Todd Portune, it looks like the party decided to take his suggestion and they, they put, you know, his longtime assistant, Victoria Parks, has been appointed by the Hamilton County Democrats to finish Todd Portune's term as county commissioner, which I believe is up in November. And the way it'll work is because he's, he's stepping down, there's gonna be a primary, right? And that's gonna be in March. Whoever wins that Democrat primary will be the Democrat candidate. And it'll go, their person will go up against the Republican candidate in November. If I'm wrong about that, please set me straight. And so from what I gather, Victoria Parks had to basically, you know, commit to stepping down. Because what will happen is whoever wins the Democrat primary in, in March, Victoria will step down, they'll take over and then take over the rest of Todd Portune's seat. And then have some momentum in a runway in which to, you know, campaign against the Republican candidate. But until then, it's an all-female Hamilton County Commission. And my question is, you know, how much latitude, like is Victoria Parks the commissioner, commissioner, commissioner? Is she, is she the commissioner, commissioner? Or is she the commissioner light, you know, while other people are making the decisions? I don't know. And then what decisions are there to be made between now and then? Quote, Parks best reflects the beliefs, style, understanding of issues, demeanor and commitment to the agenda I laid out to voters in 2016. That's what Portune said in a letter to Hamilton County Democratic Chairwoman Gwen McFarlane, who is a black female. Think about that. And if you think that that's impressive and somebody, you know, I posted this in the friends page or somebody posted, it might have been me. But somebody posted, oh, you know, it's gonna be all effed up now. And I think that's like some gender bias. I don't have any gender bias. I think if the Democrat, whoever the Democrat candidate is, if that candidate wins in November, guess what? You have an all-female Hamilton County Commission again for a longer term. So you know, in your opinion, what does that mean? What does that mean? What will that mean? You know, because if we have all female, all Democrat candidate, I mean, commissioners, what will that mean exactly? Because they're all females, are they gonna do something different than the males did? You know, is there, is there a, a female agenda? That, and I'm not saying in a negative way, I'm saying in a good way. Is there something that it will take all women to address that even having one man there, they wouldn't be able to? I don't know. All you need is a majority to get some things done. I don't, things to think about. You tell me again, but again, she is, Victoria Parks is your new Hamilton County Commissioner. So now you've got a majority black Hamilton County Commission. With a strong possibility, because you got three female candidates, one of which we'll talk with, I've already confirmed this week. Two of them are African American, one of them is European American. If one of the African American candidates win the Democrat primary and then goes on to win against a Republican candidate, guess what? You're gonna have a majority black Hamilton County Commission. Now, if we get a majority black Hamilton County Commission, what does that mean exactly? Are we expecting to do anything differently than a, than a, than a white majority, uh, Hamilton County Commissioner did? What do you think? Again, something to think about. Little long-term perhaps, but something to think about no less. Cassandra writes, my, my daughter plays JV basketball as a freshman and is on track to be on varsity next year. As long as they having fun, it's all good. It's a beautiful thing. Then you get the chance to go to the games and see your kids out there competing with other kids. You know what I'm saying? It's gonna be fun. I'm looking forward to it. And it starts, I think it starts next weekend. I'll post pictures. He is, he's running around the house playing air basketball. And what man doesn't like that? You see your son who looks just like you, named after you. I'll say it again. I'll never understand why men don't name their first child after them. It just seems like the manly thing to do. It just seems like the manly thing to do. That's your child. Your first born. I don't get it. I don't get it. But anyway, so he's been running around the house doing air dribbling. I mean, he's air dunking. He's doing all kinds of stuff. You know, i- i- and, and, and I'm sitting back watching him. You know, I love the game of B-ball. I'm sitting back watching him, loving every minute of it. Loving every minute of it. So like I said, he's gonna be our entertainment as we get older in life. It's gonna be quite fun, hopefully, but you know. We don't grow up and do some dumbish, but if we do. Hey, matter of fact, I'm taking it back. He is gonna grow up and do some dumbish, cause we all do. I just hope it's relatively small and I just hope I'm around so I can uh, you know what I'm saying? Put some cocoa butter on it, so to speak, cause it's gonna happen. Brian Rice morning, Brenda Rice, happy Monday. It is a happy Monday. Uh, Maya Rice, good morning, ready to listen to all the whining from the chappers. Hashtag alt middle is for the children, not you jerk offs who cry about everything. Too many victims, not enough assailants. I think you might be in the wrong show, Maya. I, I don't hear anybody whining in here. I don't know what you're talking about. Uh, I think you do the most whining, quite honestly. Now that I think about it, you do the most whining of anybody else. Uh, Karamia Rice, we're off to a running start. If you got out of bed, good morning to all of you. That's right, you are. You are. It's a blessing to be alive. Tony writes, I feel you Nate. My children nineteen years apart. I thought it couldn't be any better having my daughter, but then my little man came. Now I get to have a role dog all over again, right? Telling you, man, you know, he, he looks like me, he sounds like me. And uh, it's just a funny thing. It really is. Cam's in the house. He writes, good morning. Oh, good morning to you, Cam. No Cincinnati polite podcast. Uh, looking forward to it. Featuring Cam Hardy. Uh, Maya Wolfstein writes, the black dude got a slap on the wrist. No jail time. Prosecutors asked for ten months. He got no jail. Quit whining. Oh man, take your own advice. Take your own advice. And I'll say it again, you know, it's a damn shame because if, I kid you not. If somebody got shot in the back, run away from a convenience store because they stole ten dollars worth of something. People would say, he got what he deserved. Our, our idea of justice is all jacked up, man. I, I, I blame popular culture. I blame the movies. It's all jacked up. Drop writes, shout out to holy matrimony and fathers raising their sons and daughters. It takes two to make a thing go right, right? I mean, to me, one of the wokest things you can do is taking care of your family. And, you know, being there for your children, especially in the black community. And, you know, not abandoning your kids. And showing respect for the mother of your children, you know what I'm saying? You know, wifing her up, you know, saying the very least showing respect to her. I mean, that, that's, that's real basic. You know what I'm saying? But nowadays, people like to trash women, primarily black women. It's a damn shame. FG writes, uh, great morning, good people. Hey, good to see you, FG. Let me see you. Kelly writes, good morning. Hey, good to see you, Kelly as well. Uh, Chris Rice, pre, peace to Nate and the chappers. Good to see you. Ray's in the house. Good to see you, Ray. Good morning. Jason Williams is a lightweight Peter Bronson. Right. So he's a lightweight Peter Bronson and he's saying that about Smithman. But what is that in, in terms of the text messages? So what does that say? I mean, just let it play out. See what happens. Focus on the violence. They had thousands of gunshots throughout the city of Cincinnati. Dozens of unsolved murderers. I just feel like if you're the chair of law and public safety, that's what you should be focusing on. You know what I'm saying? If people feel that way, hey, good morning to you, Jesse. Appreciate you. You know what I'm saying? Evans landscaping VP to serve probation for fraud conviction. That's it. I see him here. Jim Bailey. He was a former VP. And he was convicted on federal charges for creating a shell company to get minority contracts. And he got sentenced on Friday. Now for people who are saying, so what should we do about it? Well, I think the, the very least that you can do is you can read Tamaya Dinar's proposal. And if you support it, then let city council members know. Hit them with an email. Hit them up with a phone call. Bailey received thirty-six months of probation, six months of which with an ankle monitor. And twenty thousand dollars in fines along with two hundred hours of community service. Well, I guess they said it wasn't his company. So, you know. Again, Doug Evans got twenty-one months in prison, thirty-six months on probation. And fifty thousand dollars in fines. The company has to pay five hundred thousand dollars. Now that's a lot of money they have to come up with. Five hundred thousand? And you better, you, I bet you, I bet you Doug Evans, I bet you the lawyers, man. They've been working on this case for five years. I bet you the lawyers got paid. I wouldn't be surprised if the lawyers didn't get five hundred thousand dollars out of it. I would not be surprised. So let's say Doug Evans is at a mill. A mill fifty. Damn. Should've been more, more. I think he got off light though. Very light. But again, I mean, from what I gather and what I read from Tamaya Dinar's proposal. She's trying to address when a situation like that happens, whether a company can just come back and just so easily get city contracts. And again, I say, and that you should not be allowed, you should not be convicted of defrauding the city. And then come right back and get public contracts. No. There's gotta be some penalty. You know what I'm saying? It's gotta be some penalty. And in a community where we think it's okay to taser little girls. Because they had fifty dollars worth of grippos and some nai laters and some Snickers. I'm just amazed that we don't hear more outrage about it, but I'm only kind of amazed, actually. Uh, Broadway writes, the far left will be the destruction of the Democrats as well as the overall society. We need to, as Hillary says, bring these predators to heel. Enough is enough. Anyway, good morning. Hashtag alt middle Ayatollah stand up. I mean, I, how many times we, are we gonna just, as a community, keep bringing up old stuff? I mean, okay, Hillary said what she said. Long time ago. You know, people, people were different then. It was old nineties. Yeah, that's, yeah. Stop bringing up old stuff, Broadway. She said that a long time ago, man. It was a whole different hairstyle and everything. And you just won't let it go. As if you want us to keep reliving it over and over again. We know what she said. She paid the price.
Challenge is to take back our streets from crime, gangs and drugs. And we have actually been making progress on this count as a nation. Because of what local law enforcement officials are doing, because of what citizens and neighborhood patrols are doing. We're making some progress. Much of it is related to the initiative called community policing. Because we have finally gotten more police officers on the street. That was one of the goals that the president had when he pushed the crime bill that was passed in nineteen ninety-four. He promised a hundred thousand police. We're moving in that direction, but we can see it already makes a difference. Because if we have more police interacting with people, having them on the streets, we can prevent crimes. We can prevent petty crimes from turning into something worse. But we also have to have an organized effort against gangs, just as in a previous generation, we had an organized effort against the mob. We need to take these people on. They are often connected to big drug cartels. They are not just gangs of kids anymore. They are often the kinds of kids that are called super predators. No conscience, no empathy. We can talk about why they ended up that way, but first we have to bring them to heel. And the president has asked the FBI to launch a very concerted effort against gangs everywhere.
Well, maybe you're right, actually. Keep bringing it up. You are right. Renee writes, uh, good morning. You know, we can't forget that shit. She don't get no pass for that. Drop writes, shout out to the alt middle. He wants to be alt middle so bad. Just say, will you send this a, a T-shirt, please? Damn. Mason Moller writes, the far right is the reason black people left the party, except for a couple of bootlicking, buck dancing sellouts. Cam writes, we need leaders on council. Less egos and more work getting done. I agree. I agree. Hold on, I'm getting a call. From one of the choppers. Who is this? Uh, hold on one second, chopper. I'll put you straight on. Um, I agree with you on that, Cam. One hundred percent, man. We need people that's not gonna sweat the small political stuff. We need people that can build consensus. And I think that's a skill. I'm not saying I necessarily had that skill. I ain't trying to act like that. I'm just trying to say, from what I've seen, that's what it takes to get shit done. Cause to me, it seems like you can be on council and you're just sitting there. And you're voting on everything, but you're not really proposing anything. You know what I'm saying? But let's go to the phones. Good morning. Welcome to the show.
Morning, morning, morning. Wonderful morning. It's a great day to have a great day, Nathan. It's Kevin on a fair.
Hey, what up, Kev?
How you doing?
I'm doing great, man. Welcome to the show.
All right, man. So here's the thing. I've been listening to that clip from Hillary Clinton. One hundred times, very literally a hundred times. And I'm gonna say again, to anyone that's listening. I defy you to tell me anywhere within what she said, that she said she was talking about like this. She said that people, because I don't know if y'all know this or not, but I know this for a fact. There are like gangs, there are Chinese gangs, there are Spanish gangs, Latino gangs. There are, there's all kinds of, white gangs. She never said anything about any particular person. What the media did was they took it and spun it and said, oh, well, what's in the news right now is the Christmas card. So we're gonna make it about black people and everybody voted, but why and think it? But quite frankly, I don't know if you know anybody like what she's talking about, but I know folks that don't have any conscience. And they don't, it doesn't really matter what color they are. They just, they just don't like people or don't care. They wanna get their bread and that's really all they think about. So I'm not sure how what she said is so nefarious. But people keep telling me it's a horrible statement that she made.
Well, in my opinion, she was talking about black people. She was talking about black teens. I mean, going back to the nineties, you had all the crime that was happening. You know, fueled by the drug trade, the face of crime, primarily in the nineties was of black men, right? Because of the gangs scaring the hell out of people. And you know what? She's even apologized for it. So clearly she thinks she said something wrong.
She should have apologized for it. What she should have said is y'all spin, y'all spun my comment out of context. You took my con- comment out, because, because truly, back in the nineties, no, that's not true. I was watching a, a show the other day, uh, that was talking about uh, some California gangs. This was some Mexican cartel gang. And they was, they were some ruthless dudes. They were killers, clearly killers. And, and so, yes, people ascribe the fact that it was, cause that's what everybody does. We ascribe everything to the black folks that's negative. People took that and said, oh, she's talking about black people.
Well, the other reason, but the other reason why people took it that way is because they look at the impact of the prison industrial complex. That, you know, rose right after this, cause they put all this money into locking people up and these super max prisons. And you saw the rise of the prison industrial complex. And what we found out is that largely it was people of color that got incarcerated after that. So it wasn't that people just made it up. That's what happened.
But, but, but Nathan, again, that's because community policing ending up being policing people of African American descent. Or Africans throughout the diaspora. But that's not necessarily what it was intended for. That's just who got targeted. Well, who targeted them? It wasn't Hillary Clinton. It was the police officers that are still targeting them today. And it don't matter about a community policing crime bill or anything. That's just what they do. Yes, absolutely. We get, we get close out. I, I remember at the time I was sitting in my car, I had a big black Cadillac. Cop pulled me over and said, man, you drive one of these thug mobiles. I said, this is a classic. He said, no, man, you just, you, you gotta be a thug. I said, I, I work for a living and I go to school as well. That, that ain't got nothing to do with Hillary Clinton though. That's, that is the, that's the mindset of a country. So I, I, I get it. I understand why people ascribe what they ascribe to, to her comment. But I'm gonna say again, that our own internal prejudices are the ones that made that into some really nefarious statement. And the actions of the police department have nothing to do with what a, 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 a leader of state says out loud. And she honestly, maybe she did feel some kind of way, and for that I hold her accountable, but her statement in and of itself, I was nothing wrong with it. If you ain't killing with no conscience, I don't care what color you are, man. I don't want you on my street. I don't want you messing with little, uh, I'm sorry, uh, what is she getting? Middle Brutus? I don't want you messing, I don't want messing with Young King. I don't, I definitely don't want you messing with, with my, my, um, my, my gorgeous little, uh, shorty. I, I don't want you messing with nobody. So I want you off the street and I don't care what color you are. I'm gonna tell you the truth. If you're out there doing things like she was talking about and you're black, man, hey, hey, it, well, you know, it's whatever. I agree again, I gotta say again, this isn't about uh, three-strike rules and putting people in jail. Uh, for stupid things like they got a, a nickel bag of weed in their pocket and stuff like, I get that. That was all horrible. But that was just horrible policing. They didn't have anything to do with the statement that was made.
Well, I think it all has something to do with it because she set the tone for how things were gonna move forward. And if you even take the color part out of it, I mean, just for her to refer to youth, the kids as super predators. As having no conscience, no empathy, that just set the tone for what we later saw was in the interactions of law enforcement on the street level. And then again, a- again, black folks are not wrong to look at that and say they were targeted because they were. If you look at the, the people who were incarcerated a- after and during the Clinton administration. It was black folks. In a lot of cases, they used the drug, the drug, the drug war against us. And incarcerated a lot of people for non-violent so-called felonies. You got people locked away with truth and sentencing laws and three-strike laws. Now twenty years later, some of these federal levels, they backed away from these things because they realized that the impact was not what they wanted to be. So I think she was right to, I think she was right to, she, what she should, her mistake was this. I'll tell you her mistake. Her mistake was that she waited until she was running for reelection to apologize. Cause people didn't believe her. It seemed like it was self-serving. If she really cared, she should've said that before she was running for office. And it made her give her, she could've got more mileage out of it.
One more thing, Nathan, though. So I, I don't know if you, well, I know you around in the nineties. I was around in the nineties. And I do remember that uh, all the people that are right now saying, oh my gosh, she's a horrible person, blah, 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 this, this and that. Are the same people that were going around, walking down the street, doing uh, 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 hottie hottie hoes. And telling drug dealers gotta go and uh, uh, New Jack City, uh, we said yesterday, all of that stuff. Is, a- all of that was going on too, and that was black folk doing it. So you know, we, we get, we get to pull out this, oh, you know what, it disproportionately affected us. So now, because it had this negative effect on us as a folk, then, then now we get to color it, think, oh, well, there was something that was done. The, the negative thing that was done is the thing that is still being done. It ain't got nothing to do with the crimes then. You know what I mean? The, the young men that were, that have been killed in the past few years, uh, uh, who have disproportionately been African American males, honestly. And then so, some la- some women, but really disproportionately African American males. That ain't got nothing to do with a super predator crime bill. That has something to do with poor community policing. Where we are being seen as and targeted as some negative element of, of the, of the country. And that right there just needs to stop, period. But the people that I grew up with that were the mentors in my, my community. Were the same folks that were running around talking about, they loved that crime bill when it was quote-unquote getting drug dealers off the street. They loved it. They went to church, talked about it. They was happy. Everybody was happy. And now you color it back, like you said, you color back twenty years and see how it disproportionately affected us. And now all of a sudden, oh yeah, we was never for that. Now you was for it, you just didn't know how it was gonna work out. And the same thing that happened then is happening now, and that's what we have to stop. We cannot have our young men and women being looked at as some sort of animal or some sort of, of, of predator. In, in that, that type of instance, and that is the issue. But it's really not, it's still not about her. I would have apologized. I'd have said, look, I said to get. I said to get people who have no conscience off the street. Again, I don't care what color you are. If you don't have a conscience, you don't have a conscience. And I know teen kids, whatever you wanna call them, they really, they, they shoot each other, Nathan. These people are killing each other. I don't care what color they are. You gotta be really cold-blooded. And we, we, we talk about this all the time, about having that, that, uh, CCW, you know? Having that gun that, and, and praying that you ain't never got to use that gun to take somebody's life. That is not everybody's story. And the people who don't really feel like that, I don't necessarily want them on the street. Now, if you got a psychological program, a, a, a problem, I pray, I pray that there's a program that will speak to it and help you, and, and help you come out of those issues and all that good stuff. But if that's not your thing, if you literally are just slightly psychotic, I don't want you next to me. I, I don't care what color you are. I do not want you on the street. And I, again, I'm not talking about people that sell weed, or even people that sell dope. I'm talking about the people that are out there that really don't have a conscience.
Yeah.
That's my take, man.
And who are those people? I don't really know. Again, Hillary Clinton apologized for this. She said she regretted saying it, and I bet she believes it. I bet she really does, because it probably cost her a lot of votes, you know, in, in the last election. And, uh, it was a bad look. And again, it, it, right after, that crime bill was bad for the black community.
Yeah, and black people at that time should have said, hey, you know what? It still should be saying, to this day, right now, I don't care about any bill. I don't care what law you pass. If you come out here and you police me like I'm an animal, if you're treating me like, if you, if you pull me over on the side of the road, and this happened to me, and, and you say, uh, you approach my, my, uh, my car with your hand on your gun, with it unfastened, and your finger reaching for the trigger, and I gotta tell you, both my, I gotta let down my window, put both my hands on the wheel, say, officer, I'm not moving until you take your hand off of the trigger of that gun. I will do whatever you say, but if you kill me right now, you gonna kill me with my two hands stuck on this wheel, and I'm gonna hold it with, for, for their life. And, and we had that, had a verbal exchange, I literally had a verbal exchange on how he was gonna walk me outside of this car so that I wasn't gonna get killed. And I, again, I'm not some, some, well, I don't think that I'm some nefarious looking dude that's out here trying to hurt anybody. I'm just some guy. So, that, again, that has nothing to do with the crime bill. That has to do with the negative perception.
They might have thought you was a super predator.
Yeah, you know why they thought I was a super predator? Because they needed police training. You know why they, you know why they, they thought I was a, because, because you put as many cops on the street as you want, and you teach them upfront, hey, you know what? These are our people. We serve them. You're supposed to be taking care of them. Everybody literally is what, 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 uh, what they're, uh, supposed to be, innocent until proven guilty. If you do that, it doesn't matter what color the guy is, or whether he's considered a quote-unquote super predator or not, when he's sitting in his car. But when you turn around and you say, well, because some crime bill got passed, that made it okay for police to do negative, that's what, that's the problem. The problem is the, the problem is the consequence. That's the, that's the problem. The problem is the consequence. It might have become some law got passed. It's how the law was interpreted. I don't know, man. It's, that's my mindset. I don't know.
Caramia writes, she says, hey, Caramia has a, I think it's a comment for you. She writes, caller, whites kill more of their own as much as they are killing us.
I ain't saying nothing about black on black crimes, but I don't believe nothing about black, people who live with, with other people of, of the same persuasion, which is likely most of us, uh, in, in the United States, uh, they, 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 they kill each other. That's absolutely the truth. That's, that's, that was, that's an absolute, Caramia, that's the truth. The, 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 uh, the, the most honest statement ever made in the history of the earth. Like, like you say, Nathan, all the time, no one says anything about quote-unquote white on white crime. And nobody says anything about, uh, Hispanic on Hispanic crime, crime or anything else. Again, that's, that's again, where they're ascribing some negative characteristic to us. But that does not make the person that makes a law, or a rule, or gets additional police officers on the street, or, that doesn't make them the enemy. The enemy is what it is. It's the, and sometimes, and I'll be honest, sometimes it's not even racism. It's just prejudice. It's just flat out, I don't know people that look like you, so I treat you differently than me, and that's it. That's just training, man. That is, that is getting to know people, you know, sit down and have a meal together and find out, oh, this, you know, everybody ain't bad, or whatever. You know what I mean? But that ain't, that's not, that, that's not at all what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, don't treat me badly just because I, I, I'm a, I'm a light-skinned black, or dark-skinned black, or just because I'm black, right? Don't treat me badly because of that, and then make it seem like, well, it's okay, we gonna blame laws. No, that means that now, we changed the law, but we can still treat you the same way, because that's what happened.
Broadway Flow writes, uh, he writes, don't worry, master. I'll get these niggas in line, master. Kev on a plantation. He's saying that's you.
No, no. I, I feel that, and I ain't got no problem with that. And people keep saying that kind of stuff. But look here, this is the truth. When, 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 when folks talk about being on a plantation, I tell the president what it is to its face. I don't got no problem. I, I'll speak, I'll tell you if I think something's right, and I'll tell you if I think something's wrong. Now, I'm not, I'm not capable for nobody, you know? I'm capable for my people. People say they, they're ra- I'm a racist like a scientist is a scientist. I study my folk to see them, make sure that we do better. We ain't gonna worry about silly things like bad crime bills from back in the past. We gonna get this orange dude out of the, out of office. We don't worry about things like that. We don't worry about getting this orange dude out of office and making sure that we have a safe place for our, for our, our, our folks to grow up, including mine, yours, and everybody else.
Cam wants, Cam wants to know, Cam wants to know, he wants you to define super predators.
A super predator is a person who does not have a conscience. It does not have a color. It's not black, white, Mexican. It doesn't matter. It's a person without a conscience, who wants to do well, basically, at the, at the, at the, uh, expense of any or everybody else. That is a super predator. I don't care what color you are. That person is a white guy that would say, you know what, man? I'm selling meth to everybody in my, in my community, and I'm gonna kill all of y'all, and I don't care nothing about none of y'all. And if one of y'all step up to me, I'll put a bullet in your brain, and it won't take me not one step. I won't think about it. I'll just take you out, period. That's a super predator.
Uh, Cam writes, Kev on that 5G cell that kills brain cells.
I ain't got one of those. Anyway, so.
It's not going too well for you this morning, man. The choppers ain't feeling it.
No, no, hey, hey, wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm gonna break that down for you too, Nathan. Look, I went into, I went into Verizon and said, give me the, the lowest-cost cell phone you got, because I ain't paying a lot of money to talk to Nathan on a cell phone. No, sir. So, I paid mine off cash, Cam. Thank you very much. Anyway. Like I said, man, this isn't about that. What it's really about is, the reason Hillary Clinton lost that election is because the other side of the coin did everything they could to pass every negative, ascribe every negative thing. They said she was wrong because she supported her husband. They literally, Christian folk said that it was wrong for this woman to support her husband and stay together, that she did that for political gain. That's crazy. Every, every last Christian I know says, oh, divorce is the last thing you supposed to do. You always supposed to try to work it out, unless your name is Hillary Clinton and you're running for office. That's crazy. We, we gonna make this super predator thing from twenty years ago, the, the most nefarious statement ever made in the history of a planet, when a man literally said that you can grab him by the pussy. Man, come on. This is spin, and it's bad spin. It was bad spin twenty years ago. It's bad spin today. And I'm, I'm, I'm fairly certain that the reason this thing came up was O'Reilly and, uh, 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 Rush. They're the two, they're the two masterminds behind the whole, oh, my God, the Clintons are horrible. So, again, you can say I'm racist. You can make me wrong. You can make me bad, whatever.
Well, hold on a minute. I'm seeing some support now. Drop writes, drop writes, get out now, Kev. Pam writes, I totally, Pam writes, I totally agree with Kev. Clinton did not call out a race. I also agree with Kev's definition of a super predator.
Oh, man, I'm gonna leave, because it sound like I finally got a little bit of you. But not that, not that, you know, that other guy, I don't like it when he agreed with me. That's a, you know.
Oh, you doing my drop?
Yeah, I know. Drop, drop back, drop.
Drop back mountain.
I like, I like the, hey, look, I like, I like the current president. If, if somebody ascribed to not be on my team says that, uh, says something that supports, I am very quick to distance myself from them. I would not be the person saying, there's some very fine people on the other side. Kev on a fair, man.
Appreciate it.
Nathan.
Yo.
Every station, across the nation, shout out to my man, T-Bone. Happy New Year, bro. And, uh, to the listener audience, I hope everybody just has their very best and blessed life this year.
Thank you very much for the flows, man. We'll go ahead and rack them, although I disagree. We are rack them. So, you found some, uh, some, uh, you said a friend, at least on that issue. The choppers can be mean. It can be mean. Good morning to you. If you're tuning into the show for the first time in a long time, or perhaps the first time, my name is Nathan Ivey. Welcome to the Nathan Ivey Show. Cincinnati's first and longest-running daily digital show. We speak, uh, I, I am an African American, if you can't hear in my voice already. And, uh, we talk about the issues from the city of Cincinnati in particular, um, and how it impacts us. And, uh, we talk about people, politics, and pleasure. If you'd like to share your thoughts, five one three eight seven three seven one three four. This show is no different than any other talk show. We've got our regular voices, and it is a motley crew of folks, all African American, who have a range of opinions on the range of different issues, uh, including our friend from, used to be Princeton, soon to be Florida, John. Good morning, John.
Good morning, Mr. Nathan Ivey, and the good people of Cincinnati as well, the good people around the world, and yes, those choppers. Good morning, sir.
Good morning to you, sir.
That was an interesting flows you had with that last caller, and I agree with a lot of his, um, perception and topics that he talked about. And I'm sure the focus, I came in the middle, or should I say, the start of the conversation with him, with you and, you and him, and I felt it really enlightening and very interesting. Wasn't gonna call in, but you guys covered a number of topics, and I'm sure the flows was focusing on Hillary Clinton making her official apologies, and people chiming across the country about what she said. A little dollar late, a dollar short, who cares less? Get her out of there. I didn't vote for her in twenty sixteen. I'm sure the choppers and you know that. And we do know six forty to sixty percent of, of the people across America did not vote for her, they didn't care about her, and they didn't care about him. We already chimed across this airwaves about this and made the election close. I knew that before I went to bed, and I knew possibly the rat in the White House would walk right into the White House, and we already know about that. Okay. So, but your flows with that caller were very interesting. I, I agree with a lot of things that he talked about. And I encourage him, if he's still listening, pick up, and I, I encourage the choppers to, pick up Dr. Claude Anderson's book, A Hundred and One Questions You Never Thought To Ask. And I think I mentioned to you, Mr. Nathan Ivey, to try to get him on your airwaves. The brother is very he- heavy with a hundred and one questions from historical perspective, and he brings it all the way up till today. And he answers the questions too, i- in that book for any choppers that wanna pick up that book. And as I listened to you and him talk, I, you know, as I was listening to him talk, I thought about Dr. Claude Anderson's book, because, you know, that last caller brought up a lot of topics within that book that brought things up to, what's wrong with us in the black community? What's wrong with black people and the ill problems we've had for over five centuries, and it will continue. And Dr. Claude Anderson mentions in chapter, in question number eight, the only way to clear up the mess we're in is us to come together as one. And until we get off the plantation, I know some of you choppers don't like to hear that word plantation, but some of us are sitting on the plantation, drinking the Kool-Aid, and don't wanna get off of it. But Dr. Claude Anderson indicates, unless we come together as one collectively as a group, we can click, can clean up the mess that we have. And you know how I feel, uh, Mr. Nathan Ivey. The topic of this year, going into this so-called election, as far as I'm concerned, forget about the, the Democrats, forget about the Republicans, it's reparation. And I'm gonna keep beating that beat on reparation until we come together as one. Yes, there are a lot of black organizations across the country, and I'm in tune with one in Atlanta, and one major one here in New Jersey that's pushing for reparation. There are many black organizations, and there are one, the big one in, in Washington that, that have been pushing for Cobra, that has been pushing for reparation for thirty or forty years. I think that's good. It's a good thing. But I think collectively, at some point, we have to come together for reparation as one. We don't need no more damn studies. I don't wanna hear Cory Booker, or, or Carmella Anderson, or anybody talk about more studies, because if you put studies with reparation on the platform, then that'll give them a chance, Republicans and Democrats. They'll drag this out for four more years, and reparation will stay off the block. So, you know, we got all the studies, all the research, everything is right in front of us. We just gotta decide, what the hell do you want with reparation? That's what's gonna be the bottom line.
I will say, I slightly disagree, John, real quick, if I may. Don't mean to interrupt your flow, but, no, I disagree with you. I don't think that we have analyzed the impact enough of the, the, um, the wealth that was stolen from our ancestors in this country. I don't think we've done enough of an analysis of that. I think they're afraid to do the analysis, because once you, the numbers tell you what we already know, and you can quantify it, it makes it easier to understand what is, what the dollar amount is owed. So, no, I'm for more analysis. I don't wanna do, uh, you know, paralysis by analysis, but I'm for more analysis, because it opens people's eyes up, you know, especially if they view the analysis to be unbiased. It's just the facts. And if you're a politician, and you're on a level where you can fight for or be in favor of reparations, I think you need that kind of analysis, right, to, to walk into these political corridors and get your colleagues to, to, to build with you on it. But that's all I wanna say. But I agree with your flows, though.
Well, I, 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 I agree with that perception of what you just stated. I kind of agree with that. So, if you wanna agree with analyzing the total amount, I mean, you, you know, we know historically what has been wrong to us. We know what Lincoln promised, forty acres and a mule. It didn't happen, okay? So, we did, forty acres of mule is a hundred times as much now, because of the calculation that you're really talking about. We do, okay, you'd wanna analyze those brothers, sisters, and babies that got thrown off the slave ship coming from Africa that didn't make it. Probably millions, over five million bones sitting on the bottom of the Atlantic Ocean that didn't make it here. That's a calculation, what it's, with, with it itself. Then you wanna calculate those brothers and.
But here's what I mean, like, what, what would be more impactful? Since we gonna have a reparations conversation, let's, let's have a conversation about it. In your opinion, John, what would be more impactful to the black community right now in terms of a reparations? Would it be more impactful for you to get a check for fifty thousand dollars? Or would it be more impactful for, you know, ADOS, or FBA, foundational black Americans, or whatever you wanna call it? Those are the old reparations. Would it be more impactful for their, all your children to get a free education to whatever public university or state that you currently reside in? What's more valuable?
I think what's more value is, as I sat at a conference last summer, and what you just, the question you just asked was before the people sitting in the office, and one particular person sat up and so, raised his hand and said, I don't think black people should take a check. And he broke down quickly why black people should not take a check. Most, and his question was based on, we would blow that check. Some of us would blow it in one day. Some of us would take it and put some use to it and build a, 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 a company, or pu- pool our resources together. I think personally, what is more important is land, a combination of land, check, and education. How that's broken down, I don't really know, but I, as I sit, sit in conferences and looking at reparation, and I listen to this one historian right here in New Jersey talked about, he feel land is more important. Where that land is, I don't know. It could be in the Midwest mountain. If you get acres and acres of land, what's on that land, resources, mineral, diamond, oil, who knows? The acres and acres of land could be purchased, and you can build, and we can build our black communities again, and set up our own, uh, cities and, and governments. I think that is more, more on the forefront, but it could be a combination of land, as well as our kids going to school for life, you know? But there are secretly and quietly behind the scenes, that I do know, there are white organization, I'll give you an example. Wells Fargo, the chief of Wells Fargo article I read last year stated, he stated, yes, it is time to deal with reparation, because he knows his bank goes all the way back to slavery, and he knows his bank was heavily involved with slavery. So, but there are secret organization, black organizations, as well as individual organization that have been taking reparation, taking the money behind the scene, and they're gonna be held accountable. I don't have to point out these organizations and these individuals' names at this point. That's gonna happen at some point. The money that they got, they're gonna have to get that back. We will deal with that at another chapter in time. So, it's a combination of land. So it's a combination of land, our kids going to school and resources that we need. Banks gotta, that'd be these predators, as your, some of your hackers talk about predatory, predatory banks, I'm sure we've heard of them, that have not been doing right within the black organization, black communities that wanna purchase land, set up businesses. And that's what that welfare, the chief of welfare organization un- understands, what, excuse me, Wells Fargo understand that what may have to happen.
Well, John, thank you for the flows, man. Hope you have a happy Monday.
Well, you know, a- a- and as I conclude, I, I enjoyed the conversation that you and the last caller had. You hit on a lot of topics and I think he hit on a lot of specific topics that brought up the ills and the problems within the black community. And yes, let's conclude with the Clintons had a lot to do with, um, setting up that bill and stopping fris, locking black people up. But that would not have happened if these black leaders at that time that went along with the game plan, they played the game. They were bamboozled. They knew what was going on and they did not let the masses of blacks know before that bill was passed. This is what's coming down the pipe because they didn't want you to know because they knew if blacks across the country knew what the Clintons was doing, we would have been screaming to the high hills. He would have not got that bill passed. So let's not, let's stay focused on reparation. Forget the bamboozles with this stupid election coming down the pipeline, even though I do like Elizabeth Warren. Other than that, if she gets in or whoever that candidate is, I couldn't care less. They are gonna have to deal with reparation as much as they don't wanna deal with it. They will deal with it.
All right, John. Thanks for the call, man.
Have a nice day.
Have a nice day. Oh, man, it's John. Tony writes, but you don't do anything, John, right? Um, what's up with the hate? Meyer fame toward Cam. Come on, man. Oh my God, some people, man. Can't take you nowhere, fame. Mason Mala writes, anybody seen Herman Cain or Ben Carson? What? Okay, I get it. I get it. Somebody writes, who's, who's Kamala Anderson? Pamela Anderson's biracial sister, half-sister, I guess. Kamala, Kamala Anderson. Oh, dear Lord. I told you, man, listen, God bless every one of them. You know, people hate on my regular listeners, but my regular callers, but they're regular callers. I'm very fond. And they are a motley, everybody. Listen, let's, let's go back to the phones. Let's welcome in from John to Drop.
Good morning, Mr. Ivy and all the beautiful people in the chop shop and in the greater Cincinnati area. This is your West Side Connection calling in from the People's Republic of California. Mr. Ivy, since we talking about politics and Hillary Clinton and the, uh, Clinton crime bill, if anyone has forgotten, the Democrats are still trying to find their nominee. And tomorrow, there will be the final debate before the Iowa caucuses on February third. Now, Mr. Ivy, onstage tomorrow night for the desperate Democrats, you have Bernie Sanders, an independent. You have Mayor Pete Booty Judge, a Indiana mayor who's raking in the millions of dollars. You have Elizabeth Warren, a former Republican up until the late nineties, AKA Pocahontas. And she has a plan for everything. And you also have onstage Sleepy Joe Biden. Where is Barack Obama? Is his African American over there? And you also have Amy Klobuchar. Nobody knows who she is. And you have the fifth person, which is Tom Steyer. Now, if I fail to mention all six, it's because I did not mention one. And that one person is Cory Booker. Cory Booker is accusing his own party of racism because the white billionaire Tom Steyer made it, made the final cut to be onstage tomorrow. And poor Cory could not raise the money. Now, Mr. Ivy, are we really seriously considering these people to be the opponent to go against the orange president? Who has the, one of the best economies in American history? Lowest unemployment rate since the fifties. Black unemployment historically low, Hispanic historically low, under twenty-five historically low. Everybody is eating right now. And tomorrow, America, if anybody watches, we'll see. Sleepy Joe Biden, Mayor Pete Booty Judge, Crazy Uncle Bernie, Elizabeth Warren, Amy Klobuchar and Tom Steyer. Are any black people excited about that field? I don't think so, Mr. Ivy, but we will see come November the third. So that's all I have, sir. Thank you for giving me this short time, cause I know your show will probably be ending shortly. But thank you for allowing me to get in and I appreciate that you include me as being part of your show as a regular caller and a regular listener. Without you, Mr. Ivy, what would the greater Cincinnati people do in the mornings? Drop Squad fifty-two, dropping science to anyone who wants to catch it. Peace.
Thank you. We'll rack them. Uh, laying on there pretty thick there at the end, but it's all good. Thank you. I do appreciate that rundown though. It was quite interesting. Cory Booker, uh, they made a lot of money in the fourth quarter last year, I read. But maybe not quite enough. I don't know. I don't know if it's fair the way that the Democrats are measuring whether you should be onstage or not. And I don't know if it's because of just a lack of enthusiasm behind Cory Booker, Kamala Harris has already dropped out, but it is what it is at this point. We shall see. We shall see. He says, can, are people, black people excited? I would say, hence we for black people, I would say, I would say yes and no. So for some reasons that are very real to me, I think that a different philosophy in the White House would be better for the country, in my opinion. So while I'm not necessarily like super excited about any particular one candidate, uh, the idea of a change from who we have in the White House to me, that interests me. So like I said, you know, black voters deserve to be excited. We, we deserve to be excited, excited too about candidates. Unfortunately, you don't, you don't get to choose the candidate. Like if you could put somebody up to be, to run right now, you already know it'd be Michelle Obama. Or Snoop Dogg. I, I, of course, I'm lying. Of course, Snoop wouldn't even come up. But a lot of people wanted Michelle Obama to run. And that's not her thing. She's sick of dealing with the damn Republicans. They, see what they did to her husband? Could you imagine what they would do to Michelle Obama? Oh my God, it would be nuts. They would go nuts. Because conservative media, everybody loved Obama in the media. Just to take you back, when Obama first got in the White House, in terms of black media, Obama was one hundred percent gold. All you had to do was say Obama and your phone lines would light up. People just were just wanting to talk about Obama. You know, that, it, it lasted for a while. And then on the other side with conservative media, they had the scary black boogeyman that they've always been conditioned to look for. You know, Fox News was set up to go after the scary bad other, the scary bad other than the white man. And so Obama fit perfectly. He, Obama fit what the conservative media been talking about perfectly. He's an elitist, talking down to you. We told you the black people getting too uppity. But we're gonna stop them. And they did. I'm gonna switch gears here, not even switch gears. So, you know, we, we're not too far out. I mean, what are some of the traits that we're looking for? And the Hamilton County Commissioner, what are some of the issues that on a county level matter the most to you? I ask you that as I prepare for a series of interviews, hopefully with all of the Hamilton County Commissioner candidates. All of them, even the Republican. I wanna talk to all of them. I'm gonna talk to as many people as I can throughout the process for all of the elected spaces. If it's a, if it's a, if it's an election, I wanna talk about it. So I asked for three traits. I said for city council specifically because there was some news that we talked about earlier with Jason Williams and a piece he did. He writes for the Cincinnati Inquires called Politics Extra. Lot of people that are into politics look at that because, for various reasons. And, uh, he was criticizing various city council members and city council as a whole. And, uh, kinda sparked the conversation in terms of traits that I'm looking for, for a next city council person. That is right around the corner. And I'll say it again, we need somebody that's not gonna sweat the small stuff and get caught up with these petty beefs. These petty little political posturing and jockeying back and forth. That's the real enemy to the people. You wasting our time down there getting caught up with your personal beefs. Two, we need people that can build consensus. You know, people that can work with other people on ideas, right? They can sit in a room like the collaborative process. And that might come natural to some people and it may not come natural to other people. Like you can be great. You could probably like run a business. Well, I won't say run a business. You could probably do a lot of great things, have a lot of great talents. Doesn't mean that your consensus building, that doesn't mean that you can go into a room with eight other people that's got as, just as much pull as you do and hash out deals on the benefit for the community. And then three, and perhaps most importantly, we need people to understand that the, you know, charting the growth of Cincinnati overall should be your, the goal. But a major part of making sure that Cincinnati becomes that city in the future is what's happening in the black community. And closing the inequities and closing the gaps. If you go back to a study that was done by the Urban League, which I will not forget, in which they talked about the two Cincinnatis, that should be your guide. If we haven't closed those gaps, that should be a major focus. Right? Cause when the tide goes in, man, it lifts all the boats. And it seems very simple and plain to me. And I just offered a space for you to share your own thoughts. Again, five one three eight seven three seven one three four. So I wanna play this for you because over the weekend, black Twitter got busy with a black female host of a very popular show. It's called The Real, The Real. And they've had their own internal drama and it's five women from different ethnicities and they talk about issue. And Lonnie Love is a black female and she's a host on the show. She plays a very prominent role. She's in the center seat and she brings up a lot of topics and things like that. And that show is very, very popular. And just listen to what she said about the black community and black men in particular. Check this out.
In the black community, I wanna, you know, I don't speak for the black community, but I do think that a lot of black men, they really don't know how to have true faithful relationships. They think because they have money, because they have power, that they can treat women any kind of way.
Lonnie Love is saying things.
And that is something we need to work on. We need to work on that, that money and power does not mean that you can just do whatever you wanna do.
I think sadly in so many cultures, that is the whole machismo thing, like that is, that goes across the board, but I, I'm gonna say-
No, it's not across the board because what is happening is that we are still dealing with the point of, uh, slavery and we are descendants of slavery. And because our families were broken up, we still do not have an idea of wha- how to have together families, cause our families were broken up. And until we really start-
From that perspective, I absolutely, I absolutely get that.
Slavery, welfare reform in the sixties and stuff, like it's a, this is a long, ooh.
So when you get, when you hear, uh, when, cause I wanna say, when you hear Joe Button say, you know, well, you know, he worked so hard. It, it's not a bad thing. He's saying, you know, Kevin don't wanna be poor no more. Okay? So he's like, uh, let me go out here and make this money, cause I don't wanna go back to where I was in Philly. So what he was saying was he was using it as an excuse and we modernize it and say, but that's not, no, but what he, you gotta understand the whole psychology behind it. That's the reason why he's working so hard, cause he don't wanna go back to where he came from, cause then he'll lose the power.
And then working so hard is affecting his relationship. So it is a-
Conundrum.
Correct, correct.
A conundrum, huh? I don't know, fam, you're the wordsmith in the, uh, chop shop. Is that a proper usage of the word? So Lonnie Love thinks that black men can't commit because she couldn't find a black man to commit to her. And I do know that she recently got her brand new European male boo. Wish him the best. It's always, this happens a lot. I've made the point, I'll make it again, like, I think ultimately you should be with whoever the hell you wanna be with. You should love who you love. Love is a very rare thing when it's honest and true. Just like friendship, a real friendship is very rare. It's very rare. Right? Love is very rare. Everybody don't get a chance to fall in love. It's just what it is. And, you know, so if you find somebody, white, black, Hindu, I don't know if that's a race or whatever, Mongolian, and they wanna love yo ass, you should love them back. Okay? But I've just observed that it happens more when it's a black female than when I see white females in interracial relationships where they gotta write a book or do a blog or come on TV and talk about the differences of white man and black man. I mean, it's just a strange, it's, it, it's almost like it's a coping mechanism. And as a black man and knowing black men, single, committed, girlfriend, fiance, married for many years, married for a short term, that, it just seems, it seems incredible that anybody would really wanna believe that. You know, that shit ain't true. There's plenty of black men. Men are as faithful as men. You know, I don't know if black men are any more or less faithful than white men. I do know that black men don't cheat. So what the hell is she talking about, right? That's the hashtag. What's she talking about? Lonnie Love couldn't find somebody to commit to her. So now she feels like no black man commits. No, he, you just, he just said, he just ain't that into you, boo. Or you just haven't found a guy at the right place. When a man decides to be faithful, he can be faithful, period. Just like with a woman, ain't no difference. If, if you meet a man and he wants to make that commitment to you, he's gonna do it. If you meet a man and he, and he don't wanna be monogamous, he's not gonna be monogamous, period. It's just an individual thing. I think male and female, white and black, and then she tried to connect it to slavery. Did she have a point though? Let me play the other side. Is there a point to what she's saying? Like because of slavery and the family was broken up, then men in twenty nineteen don't know how to be faithful. Because if you go back to all of their grandfathers and grandfathers going back to slavery, none of them have been faithful because none of them learned, you know, uh, none of them learned how to be faithful because that's some dumb shit. I don't even know what that means. I can, is there like a YouTube channel where I can verify this? How do you trace that? I think she's making shit up. But this is the kind of conversations that they're having on these shows that have millions upon millions of viewers that watch it live. And then millions upon millions of other people will watch it on social media and YouTube and things like that. And they believe in this dumb shit. Yeah, black men just can't commit. No, boo, you, they just don't wanna commit to you. That the men you, the black man you've wanted to commit to you just didn't wanna commit to you. Why can't it just be like that? Why do you have to make some grandiose generalization about all of black men? I just, that's, that's what burns me up as a black man. You know what I'm saying? Make it easy for me. You know what I'm saying? Make it easier. I know plenty of black men. Plenty of black men that, that are faithful. Pam writes, good morning. Don't you always say that men are as loyal as their options, Nate? No, Chris Rock said that. Yeah, there's a lot of men who are as faithful as their options. There's a lot of men who are faithful by any measure of the world, whatever the hell that means in today's society. Because like I said, Instagram is pornography. And, and straight porno, I mean, it depends on who you, who's on your feed, but it can be straight pornography. And it's free. All you gotta do is download the app. People got that. We're living in different times. I live in a different, I remember when people had conversation about whether dating online was viable or not. Now, that's like the way people meet each other. You know, you're on a post or you see somebody's, somebody's Facebook profile picture, you're like, hmm. And you shoot them a message. Karamia writes, men are faith to themselves be true. Pam here stirring the pot. Cassandra writes, she's not lying though. I disagree with her that it's not across the board because there are men in every culture who might be the primary breadwinners in a relationship or whatever, and they feel entitled to cheat. At the end of the day, love who you want, no matter the color, but she not wrong. Oh dear Lord, how you gonna agree with her? Jerika, I don't know what that means, Jerika. I definitely want to hear your opinion about it. Just remember, black men don't cheat as we had this conversation. So you saying she ain't lying, huh? I don't see it, Cassandra. I'm sorry. I just don't see it. It's a different world out here, man. Everybody's so self-absorbed. We have never been more self-absorbed than where we are right, right now. We've never been more self, narcissistic. Narcissistic, if I can get the word out. We've never been so self-absorbed as a society. You know, everybody's social media account makes them a star. You know what I'm saying? Dating is different. Like if you're somebody like Kevin Hart and you raking in hundreds of millions of dollars because of your craft and talent. Does that entitle you to have a girlfriend on the side, whether your wife wants it or not? I'd say no. I'd say no. Uh, Meyer writes, it's an old People Magazine article that predicted that's what certain celebrities would look like if, okay, I'm not sure what he's talking about. Meyer writes, I wasn't listening to this heavy heifer. That's what we doing out here? Jerry, Jesse writes, men and women cheat black or white. Yeah, thank you, Jesse. Men and women cheat black and white. I mean, this idea that women cheat less than men is one of the biggest frauds that's ever been told. That is one of the biggest lies that's ever been told. Women cheat more than men. Lion ass heifers. Y'all cheat much more than men. Y'all just get away with it. A man to cheat and have some conscience about it, it'll slip out, because that's how men are. A woman to cheat and will take it to her grave. You have to exhume the body to get a letter that's in her back pocket. She was buried with some shit like that to get the truth. That's how women are. So please stop it. And then y'all just love to hide behind when some dude gets caught out there. Men, some of these men are like Neanderthals, man. They crude and they get sloppy. These women are like super predators. When they decide they're gonna do something. And the reason why men know this is because men are dealing with these women. Y'all need to stop. Black men just don't, so now what? That becomes a provocation for the sisters to not commit to black men because they might cheat. I'm like, where, where are they going with this? Broadway writes, uh-oh, Nate is about to get it now. Tanika writes, why we gotta be heifers? I was just using the phrase that was used earlier. If you out here cheating on your man, you are a heifer. That's the other way of looking at it. It's always tragically flawed black women dissing black men. Lonnie Love is a, what? Any man dating her is getting back on his feet. What? Better lock him down quick because once he gets his confidence back, he out of there. Nobody gonna start a family with a woman. What? That big, he writes. Now, she got that big during a relationship, that's different. I'm just saying it's because y'all niggas scared too. That was a complete quote there. Jerika writes, Lonnie is a hurt black woman. I don't agree that black men can't commit. Thank you, Jerika. I do agree that there are issues within the black community, such as the relationship between black men and women that is impacted by slavery. I mean, is everything in our modern day lives, every move we make impacted by slavery? I mean, I throw that question out there. If, is everything we do, every move we make as modern black people designed by what, on some way impacted by what happened many years ago? At some point, where is the self-responsibility? Like if you really feel like, and I felt this way. If you really feel like part of the problem in the black family is the disintegration of it, well then what do you do? You should build a black family. Right? Build a positive black family, mom, dad in the house, loving, respecting each other, so that the next generation of kids that come see it and then recreate it because that's what they know. That's it. I don't know. Karamia writes, I'm too emotional to cheat. See, that's what they try to say about women. Women are, they're too emotional. That is true with some and not with others, just like with men. There's very lot, there's a lot of men out there who are too emotional to cheat. Yeah, men have feelings too. Mike writes, we as black people look at athletes and entertainers like they represent us. They are a small percentage of the black people. Stop hating on your own. Cassandra, stop. Uh, Tanika writes, good morning, my beautiful sis. At Pam, good to see you, Tanika. Cassandra writes, what does her size have to do with anything, Meyer? We see all the NFL, NBA, professional athlete, movie stars who are caught up in cheating scandals, making babies on the side. So why are we acting ignorant to the fact that there are a lot of men out there who cheat? Again, I don't agree that it's a black problem or hell, even just a man problem, because women do it too, but we are discussing men. Men especially who feel financially empowered cheat. Where is the lie? Y'all hear her say black men and getting your feelings instead of understanding the bottom, the truth, the bottom line truth. There are a lot of men in the world who don't want to commit because they have options. Well, where I disagree with it, Cassandra, is when she tried to make it just a black man thing. You know, one of the other girls tried to correct her like, well, I think it's a male, it's across the board. She's like, oh, no, no, it's, it's particular to black men, black men. Look, look, this world does operate off of money and power. That's another way where she wrong. I don't think it should be that way. I'm not saying that's my value system, but this world works on money and power. Whatever that power may be. That's how shit works. There are women who are drawn to men who have money and power. People in general are drawn to people that have money and power. So white or black or green or yellow, any person that's got money and power and then you dealing with somebody that don't have money and they just a regular Joe Schmo with no power. It's depending on their personality, the power dynamics is gonna play out in a relationship. And is there some truth to the fact that if you got a brother that's got, he's, he's got millions? That he's gonna be less likely to commit than a brother that didn't have millions? You probably right about that, but you probably said the same thing about anybody. And they're gonna be more independent because they're financially independent. So I just didn't like the way that she tried to make it a black thing. To me, it's just a human being thing. If you take some older dude and he's got money and, you know, he's got this, that and the other. He's dealing with some young girl that's trying to make it through college. Who's got the power in a relationship? The person with the money. That's just how it goes. So she creates a, she, she talks about some scenario like it's specific to black men. That ain't specific to black men. There's plenty of white dudes out here. There's running through girls that's got money. Probably in this city, leaving a long list of girls talking about he didn't want to commit. Why shouldn't he commit? I mean, I don't know. If you take a man like that, there's gotta be an extraordinary woman that crosses his path that would make him want to give all that up. So I get it. You know, just because y'all nice and y'all get along is not enough for a man to commit. Expect, you're right, especially if he's already got money and privilege and power. And whatever privilege a black man can have if you've got money in this country. So I don't know. TNT writes, we just did a show with an all male panel that was powerful. But the livestream was too weak, but the auto should be uninterrupted, but those guys were brilliant minds. Yes. Absolutely. The Dope Chips Collective, it will be up shortly. Uh, Mike writes, uh, exactly Nate, sounds like a bitter Betty. Jessica writes, Meyer, there are a number of obese women who are happy in committed relationships. You sound just as ignorant as Lonnie Love. Have several seats, Meyer. We know Meyer is, he, you, you already know. You already know with fame. He is out there. Jerika writes, so a woman's size determines if she should be cheated on or not? Get the F out of here. Meyer, there's a thin, curvy, plump woman who gets cheated on. We all have the ability to cheat. It's not determined by her gender. Yeah, Meyer is completely wrong because look at Beyonce. Beyonce got cheated on. Halle Berry got cheated on. You, you name them. That, that, how a woman looks is not gonna necessarily determine if you get cheated on or not. It has nothing to do with you. It has everything to do with the man, if that's the person. Vice versa with the woman, has nothing to do with you. Ah, these people. Uh, women and Satan made cheating popular. Eve. Tanika writes, cheaters cheat regardless of their size with it. It's an issue with the cheater, not the one being cheated on. Tanika's right. Yeah, it's nothing to do with, somebody cheats on you, you're a long time relationship, you good to them, they cheat on you. The, don't feel bad because you got a few extra pounds here or there, or maybe you're not like you used to be. It has nothing to do with that. They cheated because that's what they wanted to do and that's what they was gonna do. Period. And that's it. Um, Cassandra writes, thank you Nate, Beyonce, Halle, Jennifer Aniston, all kinds of slim, beautiful women get cheated on all the time. Size has nothing to do with it, right? Everybody thinks that, that, everybody thought that Halle Berry was like the epitome of, of beauty. And then Eric Benet cheated on her with several women. And so it's like, oh, it doesn't matter what you look like. Same thing with Beyonce. It's guys out there who would tell you sort of up and down that Beyonce is like the most, she should be put on some kind of a pedestal. Jay-Z. You know? AKA Camel Ether. Yeah. He cheated on her. So, I mean, it really don't matter. Um, Meyer writes, Jerika, I don't appreciate the reckless talk. I said what I said. Only a nigga with limited options wants a woman that big. Don't hate the player, hate the game. Is that right? I disagree with you on that, but, uh, it is what it is. Uh, let me move on. Five one three eight seven three seven one three four. If you like to share your thoughts this morning, you can use that number. And, uh, I would, um, I love to hear your thoughts. I saw somebody posted what appeared to be like a new video at a Waffle House, man. Is that something that happened in Cincinnati? Cause I haven't seen it anywhere else. I don't know if that's something new. Should we expect anything in the short timeframe? That the Hamilton County Commission is gonna be for the first time ever all female? Todd Portune's successor, a woman named Victoria Parks, was appointed over the weekend. And so that means that for the first time in Hamilton County history, you have an all female Hamilton County Commission. Should we be expecting anything, uh, special, new? Is that too much of an unrealistic expectation? Uh, and again, looking ahead, I want to remind people, I said it earlier, I'll say it again for the folks who just joined the show. Uh, this is gonna be temporary because Victoria Parks is, has agreed to step down to whoever wins the Democrat primary coming up in March. And then that person will proceed as the Hamilton County Commissioner until the election in, um, November. Now, if Todd Portune was in that seat, I, I think it'd be a landslide if he went against the Republican. I'm not even sure what the guy's name is, although I will be reaching out to him very, very shortly. And, uh, I think it's a landslide, um, in terms of if it was Todd Portune, but it's not Todd Portune, it's gonna be something different. It's gonna be Connie Pillage, it's gonna be Alicia Reese. It's gonna be Kelly Preth, it's gonna be one of those three females, one of those three women. Is gonna be the Democrat nominee going into the race in November of 2020, which is also coincidentally gonna be an election year. So lots of votes, have those election year voters, uh, who are gonna be out. And, uh, of course, if the Democrat, if the Republican candidate who I believe is a male does not win, again, what the headlines will read is all female commission. What does that mean? What does that mean exactly? Do we expect anything to happen within the next, what, two and a half months? I'm looking at the images on, um, on Twitter right now. Go ahead and like that. It's great. Hope they do something, uh, spectacular. I'm not sure what that means exactly. Uh, Meyer writes, didn't some choppers getting embarrassed by that notion of naming your first son after you? Um, I don't remember that. I don't remember that. See here. Uh, Andy Black, thank you, Karamia. Appreciate that. Iris is in the house. She writes, good morning, great people. Hey, good to see you, Iris. Uh, let me see here. Uh, Ray writes, no drop rights, no justice, no peace. Ray writes, the super predator is the white man. Yeah, as I was listening to, as I was listening to Kev on a cell, what he described, I don't know those people that live in a neighborhood. So I, the idea that they have no conscience, just because you selling drugs don't mean you don't have a conscience. They may have a conscience about it. They may feel conflicted about it, but they're doing it anyway. You know what I'm saying? I, that whole super predator mentality is, you can tell that's the attitude that some people in law enforcement have when they're dealing with our communities. And she apologized too late. It seemed, it didn't seem like it was real. Seemed like she was just saying some shit because she wanted to be elected president after Barack Obama. It just didn't play well. It didn't play well. The super predators don't live in a neighborhood, by the way. To me, when I think of super predators, I think about like, I think about people that's moving on like an international level. Like the, you might not like your dope, your local dope dealer, but I mean, who's worse, your local dope dealer or the person that's supplying this part of Ohio? The person that's bringing all the drugs into Ohio. Who's more of a super predator? To me, the super predator is the people that's dealing with like more volume. So I don't know. When you say super predators, I mean, are you talking about super predatory loans? Cause there's a lot of super predators, like these legal businesses that set up basically to steal and just take wealth away from working class people. You know what I'm saying? There's people out there, man, that's struggling. A hundred dollars here and there every month is the difference between lights being on or paying for your car. And now you got all these new industries where you can like, you know, you can like borrow money against your car and shit like that. Did you know that? You could take your car and borrow money and take a lien out on your car. And then of course you don't pay for it, them motherfuckers coming to confiscate it. This is the kind of stuff that working class people and poor people deal with. You know, those kind of super predators, like these payday lenders where you go and you pay like some huge percent of your money just to cash a check or do some kind of financial transaction. You talking about those super predators? So, you know, these got these boys on the block making a thousand bucks a week talking about super predators. I mean, eh. Kevin Flynn may sitting on city council and doing nothing in our form, that's Tony. Uh, did Kevin Flynn do anything on city council? I mean, he was awfully critical and I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I don't know his record. I, I can't tell you. I don't know what his record is offhand. Local media seems to love him. Meyer writes, caller making excuses for his master. That right? Oh, these are the Kevin on the phone remarks. Yeah. People were not too happy with Kevin on sale. Uh, Terrace is in the house. He writes, good morning Nate Chappers. Happy Monday. Happy morning to you too, sir. Thank you for your service. Appreciate it. We got to listen to Malcolm X for 12 hours to wash this coonery off of me. Come on Nate, hang up! It won't take 12 hours. I think you can get it all off in like three. It's not that bad of a stain. Okay? It's not that bad. Kev just has a different viewpoint. Drop writes, Kev on a sale is my African American over there. Not a good place to be, I would say. Anybody following the Royals? How long will it take before the Queen puts a hit on Harry and Meghan? Anybody following the Royals? How long will it take before the Queen puts a hit on Harry and Meghan? Well, you know what? I didn't realize that story was as big as it is. And I do know that the crew from the cutting through the BS podcast, they touched upon it. And I don't know all the details. I mean, just what I remember from their conversation, I might've read something like a couple of headlines. All I know is that they're like moving away from rural life because essentially the word is that they got a problem with his biracial wife. So I don't know the particulars of it, man, but I don't, I, that's, that's what's going on. I think. What, what are we missing? Karamia writes, why is John moving to Florida? Why not Cincinnati, Ohio? The land of higher than average violent crime rates and cheaply available guns among us. Which this city is twenty five as the worst of the worst city to live in. Are we gonna bring that up? I wanna talk about that, really? Why shouldn't we, right? Yeah, and a new poll, it didn't say too many flattering things about the city of Cincinnati where I'm broadcasting from right now. A new poll suggested that Cincinnati is really not that high on the list. When it comes to, you know, places to live. You saying, you seen this if you live in Cincinnati? Yeah. Tri-state, not a great place to raise a family in twenty twenty, really? This was a report that was put out by a place called Wallet Hub. Says that the tri-state area is not a great place to raise a family in twenty twenty. Well, unless you have money, like if you have money where you can afford to live in certain neighborhoods and you can afford the creature comforts that affords you, that afforded to you by living in this area and take care of your bills and things like that, anywhere is a good place to live, I think. Or can be. But let me read this here. Ohio ranked twenty eighth overall. The study compared fifty states with fifty key indicators. Let me look at the full report here. Let me see here. The best overall states for families, I'm searching for Ohio twenty eighth. Family fun rank is, see here, seventeen in Ohio. Affordability rank, seven. Health and safety in Ohio, twenty six. Back all of the states in the tri-state area ranked, I'd say in the lower half of the tier. Not good. Not a good thing. I have to go through this more, but I don't know. I mean, some people living, living good in Cincinnati. There are people that's having a great life, living their best life. Black people living, living their best life right here in the city of Cincinnati. And I wonder how much of this has to go. Here's the main findings. Okay, very interesting. Click on Ohio and see what happens. I don't know if I trust this. Seems kinda, hmm, I don't know. I may have to come back to it. Um, Kev on the cell, he writes, the super predator does live in your neighborhood. He or she will drive the street and will fire weapon into a crowd of women, men and children and don't care who gets hit. That does happen. You're right. That has happened. Um, there was some people that was killed last summer. It was young man, young man on the west side of town that was at a bus stop and he got killed. Yeah, yeah. And I think some bystander got hit too. Um, but it wasn't like a, like there, there was a relationship, like the two individuals knew each other. So it wasn't like a no conscience kind of thing. It was, I don't know what the beef was about, but it was some kind of issue, obviously, that they had with one another. I just don't even think that that's the right way to use the term for people that do those kind of crimes. I think there are better terms. Hillary Clinton was out of, she was out of time and out of touch with that comment and it cost her and rightly so. Uh, Meyer writes, is a non-story, Meghan and Harry, a thirty-five year old man decides to move out of his grandmother's basement. That's all it is. Racism in England. Who's surprised by that? Question mark. Did he think or Meghan think they'd accept her with open arms? And he could have had any woman in the world and he chose a biracial American? They pissed. Could be. What is this? Black students kicked out of Trump rally. They're kicking out the black folks? The hell? See here, I see Terrace person somewhere. He says, uh, while I will be honored to have the Democratic endorsement for the Ohio House of Representatives District Thirty-three race, I am asking for precinct executives in the Ohio, in the Hamilton County Democratic Party to remain neutral in my, in my, in my contest. There is power in allowing the voters of the fighting thirty-third to determine the best primary candidate for the general election without party involvement. I promise to run a vigorous campaign and to take my message to every voter in the district. Hashtag servant leadership, hashtag Terrace Grasston for Ohio. Really? Did you get a response? I'd be interested in what that response is. I mean, on the surface it's like, you know, Cedric Jensen is the endorsed candidate, right? They endorsed him the first time, so why not endorse him now? I don't know what the protocol is. I'm curious, Terrace, did you get a response from this? And so what was the response? It's interesting. Uh, drop writes Tracy, no black people care about the Royals. They have a token and don't know how to use her. Cam writes, Nathan, isn't it time for a break? Let me handle this. I got this. Thank you, Cam. Jesse writes, who is Kamala Anderson? Why is it when certain people come on, everybody wanna take a break, man? Look, John has a lot of value to this show and to our community. He has a different viewpoint. He has a viewpoint of somebody that doesn't vote because he's turned off, but he's still in the politics. And I don't think he's alone. I think it's rare. Oh, but I think that there's, obviously we know because two things, in the city of Cincinnati, what was it? Less than thirty percent of people that actually could vote came out to vote in the last election. And that's of people who are registered. So clearly, you know, I just come to accept that John represents a lot of people. He really does. He, he's in the politics, he's a voter. I mean, he's a taxpayer. He, he does business, but he don't, he don't trust the system. Now you know there's more people than John that feel that way. Y'all hatin' on this brother, man. John was a good brother. I like John better than Lonnie Love today. A whole lot better. And I like John better than Meyer today because Meyer's been very disrespectful today under the guys that keeping it real. More people try to do shit under the guys that keeping it real. I'm just keeping it real. I'm just telling the truth. And they just, they try to use that to isolate themselves from their nonsense. Uh, drop writes, it's always about the money. Cream cash rules everything around me. These men with money and power think they can do anything they wanna do. That's because we set up a culture where if you have money and power, you can do a lot more than people that don't have money and power. We set up a society like that. And everybody's trying to get money and power. Or some people. I'm sure it might be your thing. It might be your thing. I am about to make a move. Thank you for being here this morning. I'll be back with you bright and early, uh, tomorrow morning at eight AM. Right here. That's crazy. Oh, man. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I see it. I see it. Thank you for the call. I mean, thank you for the message. I appreciate it. Turn it up a little bit. Uh, let me see. Someone writes, why is Cory Booker? Why is Cory Booker calling his own party racist for having a white billionaire at the next debate tomorrow? And no black or brown Democrats on stage? Democrats have all the good white folks. Been, uh, a lot of people been talking about that, the lack of diversity in the Democrat field. Because of the way that they set up the rules. Again, the Democrats came with these rules. They could have just said, listen, if, they could have, they could have loosened the threshold a bit to make sure that there was more diversity, uh, on the stage, you know, that could have happened. I don't know why it didn't. I, I think that should have happened. Uh, Cassandra writes, Cam, you wrong. Tony writes, wasn't John the cat who vowed to vote only if Warren ran? Yeah, he was just talking shit. Uh, Iris writes, at Nate in the chopper, the citizens complaint authority is looking for a new executive director. Job should hit the streets. This week. What? Oh, the citizens complaint authority, okay. Okay, thank you for that. The citizens complaint authority is looking for a new executive director. She writes, Port, wait. Writes part two, Ms. Kim Neal is moving on to Florida, Fort Worth to lead efforts there. And leads to effort. She gonna deal with the policing down in Fort Worth? Really? Now, Fort Worth, isn't that well at where a Tatiana Jefferson was killed? Isn't that Fort Worth? That's interesting. Very interesting, huh? Wish her the best. Uh, Iris writes, part four, the person will need to have police investigation experience. Well, when it goes out, just please send it to me and I, I'll put it out on my social media so people can see it. Karamia writes, no, I'm not excited about any of these candidates, right? Sharp writes, Nate, a critical issue is displacement, AK, is displacement, AKA gentrification. Well, to me, that falls under the umbrella of the third, you know, trait that I think is really necessary. And that is the sensitivity to what's happening when it comes to, you know, the black community here in the city of Cincinnati. And a sensitivity and overall uh, not just focus, but intentionality, you know, with their policies to address some of those inequities. A willingness to ask difficult questions. You know, cause it's not gonna be an easy road. A willingness to challenge the authority a bit. You know, I think that's all what it's gonna take. Uh, Barack chasing Michelle around the house butt naked and I ain't mad at him. Is that you answering to drop here? I don't know. Uh, Mike Jones writes, good morning, Chappers. Good to see you, Mike. Uh, Tony writes, Lonnie Love, you're a comedian. Stick with the jokes. I agree with you. Stick with the jokes, Lonnie. And, and just talk about yours. She should, you know what people should say is just the black man I've been dealing with. That's fair. Cause nobody can tell you that your experience is wrong. But don't make these sweeping bland generalizations about brothers. It ain't good. It ain't good. But listen, have an excellent day, Chappers. I'll be back with you tomorrow morning, bright and early at eight AM. We'll chop it up on people, politics and pleasure. Of course, today's show is brought to you by the good folks of Send Digital Media, a new urban voice in the city of Cincinnati. Check out our podcasts on our Facebook page, Send Digital Media. And I'll talk with you real soon. Have an excellent Monday and I'm out.